And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in our business meeting, October 20th, 2016. First thing we do is the roll call conducted by Mr. Krupp.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. We have Mr. Chris Story joining us from County Council this evening. And as always, our ever-reliable Mary Rathke, Clerk of the Board. Commissioner Reynolds.
Right here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. I'll announce that Commissioner Smith is out of the office and will not be in attendance tonight. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll announce the Board will recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board for the next item. I'd like to introduce Housing Commissioner Paul Reynolds to my right, your left. So I'll ask the Clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, there's a Resolution 1916, Award of Five Project-Based Vouchers to Northwest Housing Alternative, and Resolution Number 1915, Award of Twenty Project-Based Vouchers and 1.1 Million in Public Housing Disposition Proceeds.
All right, Commissioners, you have any questions about that? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second. All right, motion by Commissioner Reynolds, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion. All right, Mary.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes 5-0. I'll announce the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Commissioner Reynolds, thank you again for attending tonight.
Thanks. Thank you.
And now, Mr. Krupp, we have a presentation.
Well, we certainly do. And of course, the winter season is almost upon us. And we do have a presentation this evening. It's a video, Inside Clackamas County, and it showcases winter recreational opportunities here in Clackamas County. And Mr. Tim Hyder is here to introduce this for you.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tim Hyder, Public Affairs Manager for Clackamas County. And I'm here today to share with you a video presentation, as Don said, from our cable division called Inside Clackamas County. You may know of the series. It's a series that highlights the unique recreational activities, local economy, and natural resources that make our county a great place to live, work, and play. The episode, some of the past topics that we've explored with Inside Clackamas County is the emerging craft beer industry in Clackamas County, hotspots for fishing in our rivers and streams, and the beauty scene of Clackamas County from the air. The episode we're about to share with you today is a segment from our winter recreation on Mount Hood. It's a little more than five minutes in length, and the segment details a wonderful place steeped in history that our residents and others can enjoy. Also reminds winter sport enthusiasts about the great opportunities to be had on the mountain.
(Music) Looming at 11,245 feet, Mount Hood acts like a magnet for anyone who is fortunate enough to lay eyes upon it. It draws thousands of visitors from all over the world every year. And at 6,000 feet lies the heart of the mountain, Timberline Lodge. Under the order of President Franklin Roosevelt, the Timberline Lodge was constructed during the Great Depression and was one of the many projects established to get millions of Americans back into the workforce after the financial collapse. And in 1938, the Timberline Lodge celebrated its grand opening, 15 months after construction first began. Today, the Timberline Lodge stands for many things. It remains an historic landmark and a living connection to the past. More than anything, it is a testament to the resolve of Oregonians, because nearly everything you come across while wandering its halls was crafted by hand. The headhouse lobby may be one of the most expansive areas in and around the lodge. Here, you'll regularly find travelers from all walks of life and corners of the globe. Some will be gearing up for the slope; others are after a cozy corner to catch up on a captivating novel. Whatever the case, you'll surely be kept warm and toasty next to this colossal 90-foot chimney and fireplace. And if your timing is right, you may even come across a couple of fur balls called Heidi and Bruno. These two St. Bernards are a part of a long line and standing tradition that started back in the 1950s. Ever since then, there's always been a Bruno and Heidi at the Timberline Lodge. And it's not just the storied past and beautiful craftsmanship that attracts visitors from all over the world. Timberline offers the longest ski season in North America. Timberline Lodge has the modern-day luxuries needed for an extended stay on the mountain.
recreation opportunities.
What's left are the elements that make for an unforgettable experience.
Public Government Affairs and our tourism staff worked to create this video. It's obviously timely, given the coming of winter and the next couple of months.
And from corner to corner, you can find secret trails through the trees, as well as an ever-changing
And viewers can expect to see this video on our government channel and on our social
arsenal of terrain parks for you to jib, jump, and ride your way to glory.
media platforms starting next week. Thank you for your support of our outreach and for the opportunity to promote the beautiful
And the view from the top isn't bad either.
natural resources of Clackamas County.
Next item on the agenda is Citizens Communication. I have Sherri Hall that would like to come up and give us a little talk about what's happening. She is the County Clerk.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. I thought I would just start out with what's going on with elections so far. You know that we mailed the ballots out yesterday, so they should have started hitting the mailbox today and throughout the rest of the weekend. And just a little point of history or law, I guess, here. We're getting lots of calls from people asking why we're so late in, you know, getting everything out, like, where's my ballot? And it's because the election is a little later than normal this year. The November election, general election, always falls on the first Tuesday after the first Monday. Did you all know that? So that's November 8th. And our website is up on the screen, and I want to point out the box that says Ballot Tracks. This is our second time using that, and it's the country's only complete mail-in ballot tracking solution, which allows voters to receive a call, or an email, or a text telling you where your ballot is sent, when your ballot is sent, and received and accepted. And we all need to know that, right? As soon as we drop it in the mailbox, the state pays for this service, and this is our second time using it. So you should click on that box and sign yourself up, and you'll know exactly what happens to your ballot when you drop it out of your hand. For this election, too, we are really, we have thousands more registered voters than we did four years ago. Our number today is 267,701 registered voters. November of 2012, we had 2,000, excuse me, 229,236. So that number is up 38,465. And that has a lot to do with social media, our new motor voter law. You're all familiar with that, I'm thinking. On the day after voters' registration deadline for new Oregon voters, which was the 18th, we had 6,000 new registration forms the next morning in our inbox. And so all of that information, of course, has to be data entered and get the ballots out to those people. But the interesting thing is, many of the new registrations are not changing anything from what we already have on file for those voters. But we still need to go through the process of entering the data and making sure that everything's correct. Our normal inbox, I guess, with registrations is about 100 a day, until we got 6,000 on that day. And these numbers will fluctuate all the way up through election night, because there's people who update the registration because they moved, and so our number will be different on election night. And some of the changes that we have since the last presidential election, the recording and Elections Office, you know, merged a few years ago, and we have one lobby, and it's already been pretty full at times, and it will continue to be that way up through election night. But we want people to still come in anyway and do what they need to do. We also have a record-setting voters pamphlet this time. We had 112 pages, which was our limit, in order to insert it into the state pamphlet. If it would have been one more page, we would have had to mail ours separately. We have 38 measures in this county that are just Clackamas County measures, you know, within the cities, plus all of the federal and state measures and candidates. And we also, I want to talk about the Agilis machine. Mary's going to put a picture up. You all know about that machine, I think. That is our new ballot acceptance system. So when the envelopes come in, we will just put them all in that machine. And this is the envelope. So we'll just put stacks of them in the machine. It will scan them all and sort them into the tubs that we have here. We call these batches. And our thought is that for, in using that machine, we're going to save at least a half a day's work per person that did all of the other work before. So that's quite a savings. The old way we did it was with these beepers. We would line the envelopes up in the trays, and they have the barcodes, and we would beep each one separately. And it would be usually between three and six people that were doing this pretty much all day long. So that's quite a savings. And we haven't used it yet, so we don't really know everything about it, but we will be using it for this election. We also have something new in your ballot envelope. You know, you get your packet, and you get your ballot, your mailing-back envelope, and then usually a secrecy envelope. But now, we're starting to use sleeves, which is this. So it's pretty open, but you'll just put your folded ballot in the sleeve. And the good thing about these are, when we get them back in our office and the people are opening the ballots to prepare them for tally, they don't have to rip open an envelope. They'll just take it out of the sleeve, which is a much quicker process, and will save a lot of time and hopefully get out earlier on election night. We've also added some drop sites. We've switched some from indoor to outdoor, and some, we've just added an outdoor box to the already indoor box that are at libraries. And those are at Clackamas Community College, Lake Oswego Library, Malala Library, City of Gladstone, and Milwaukee PSB. The Damascus City Hall is closed, and so we just took that box and put it in McDonald's across the way from the Damascus Old City Hall. There's also something new this year called Election Night Reporting, which means that all of the counties are going to complete forms and send them on to the state, so that the state will show all of the counties, county by county, for their election night results. We are still going to place ours on our website, but many counties are just going to do it that way and not have them at their own website. So, is there any questions?
I actually have a question about the voters pamphlet. I was, I heard on the radio that the Measure 97 arguments in favor were completely separated. So the pro ones were next to the measure, and that the arguments against 97 were put at the back of the book. Is that true?
There's different things that have happened with the voters pamphlet. I have one with me, and the white pages are the state side of the pamphlet, and the dark gray are the counties, and this is ours. DeSchut's Counties got inserted into the arguments in favor of 97. And so she put out a press release. I think that caused a problem over there. We had one person come in with a voters pamphlet, which I sent you all an email on, where everything was pretty much messed up in it. We haven't heard from anyone else, just that one. And Measure 97 was missing altogether. We have the voters pamphlet printed at the same place the state has theirs printed, and then that company inserts them and gets them out to the post offices. So it really happened at the vendor end, because they put these together. But there are different things that have happened with it. So I'm not sure where, which county that was that you're talking about.
I heard it.
But they take it, they actually just, like, take the state pamphlet and just, you know, the very middle of it is where they put the county pamphlet. They don't really, I don't think, know if they're putting it in the middle of something like you just mentioned.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. But it would just seem that it would be, really wouldn't be intuitive for people to read the measure and read the arguments for and not see anything, and then find out that the arguments or against, the balance, would be somewhere else in the pamphlet.
It's a good thing to just really look through the whole thing to figure out what's all there, because there's state and federal measures on both sides of the county voters' pamphlet, because we're put in the middle of it. And it's online.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Sherri?
I actually have one more thing I forgot to mention when I was going to talk about the machine. I want to give a shout-out to our Facilities Department, because we bought this machine, it got delivered to our office and set up, kind of in the big back room that we use for preparing ballots for tally. And we realized that that machine really needed to be in its own space with some of the noise away from all the people. So I asked really last minute if Facilities could do a little remodel. And you'll see the machine on the right has the windows, and where that window is angled on the right, that used to be a solid wall, so that that was actually a hall where observers would stand and watch what we were doing. But it was a perfect space for that machine, and so Facilities put us ahead of, I don't know how many other jobs they had, and they got it done for us. And they just made a fabulous area with the space they used. And that window still allows observers to see everything that goes on in the room. And then you see the yellow hose hanging on the wall. Paper goes through that machine, which creates a lot of paper dust, and we have to keep it clean. So that is an air compressor hose that we can blow the paper dust out. We do that a few times during the use each time.
I do have another question, when you're ready, when you're done. And that is, the last, in the primary, when the ballots were being posted, or the results were being posted, it had the percentage of the total ballots, not the ballots actually counted, so it kind of gave a mis-
It put undervotes and overvotes and percentage of votes cast. That has been fixed. That won't happen anymore. The company fixed it.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you, Clerk Hall. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for letting me share.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Citizens Communication. I have Lake Oswego Councilor Jeff Goodman and Les Poole.
Good evening. Les Poole, Gladstone. I don't know where the budget's going to be next year, but we ought to have a town hall up there at the mountain at Timberline sometime. I haven't been in there in years, and you lose appreciation for how awesome it is. And, good video. We get really good video work here. I remember when I first started attending meetings, and they had this scratchy, grainy thing, and you couldn't figure out who they were. I had more hair then.
Didn't we all?
Yeah. A couple of things. One is, I do a lot of land use work, and people are asking me about, what's the sign codes? And there's signs everywhere, and I'm not here to be the code enforcement guy, but I would ask that if you're a candidate, just be careful about getting signs that are too far out in the right-of-way, that really aren't supposed to be there. Be careful about putting up signs that aren't going to make it through the fall weather. The little metal stands are great for a yard sign in summer, but I've gone to the neighborhood and picked up a lot of signs recently. So if you've got signs out there, you've got to respect the right-of-way. Try not to put them where you're going to block somebody's view or create a safety problem. And good luck to all the candidates. The last thing I want to mention, and I did bring it up before, and that is my concerns about Measure 97. Here it is in the newspaper, well, the legislature's going to tinker with it or something. I find that to be a real troubling announcement as the ballots are going out. And I don't believe that the measure was presented in a transparent way. And I certainly do believe that if you're running for office, or you're an elected official, you need to take a position on that. I mean, it's just one of those things that, it's that big of a deal. I mean, I don't have any idea quite how much has already been spent on it, but there's probably been 25, 30 million dollars over this thing. And if that's the case, we need to know, if you're running for office, where you're at. And I've been to a couple of forums and, like, down in Milwaukee, and, well, one of the candidates, well, not sure, not sure. Well, we've all made up our mind on that measure by now, and if you're running for office, just tell people where you're at, and it's the wrong time to try and walk a line. It really is. I will be nowhere political. I realize this isn't a campaign, this isn't a place to campaign, but that thing's on everyone's mind. And, interestingly, there's a gentleman that's running for treasurer that probably has an opinion on that. So I appreciate your time, and I'll donate my last five seconds to Jeff.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Goodman, and as noted, I am a candidate for State Treasurer. I'm here this evening to thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few moments about my candidacy and the service as Oregon State Treasurer and working with the county treasurer and the investing of money with the state on a short-term basis. Want to make sure that I, as treasurer, along with the staff in Salem, continue to make sure to maximize the returns for you on those short-term investments while maintaining an appropriate level of risk. But the question becomes, why would I want to be treasurer? It's because I'm firmly convinced that Oregon's next treasurer should actually have experience as a treasurer. I've spent 40 years in the financial business and activities. I also have an MBA from the University of Pennsylvania Wharton School of Business. I'm a past treasurer of the Legacy Hospital Emmanuel Foundations, past treasurer of USA Olympic Swimming. And you all may have heard of the name Michael Phelps, and you watched the Olympics. Well, when he qualified for his record-setting fifth Olympics this last June, first part of July, in the 200-meter butterfly, I had the pleasure of serving as an official on his lane. So other than being here this evening, that has been the highlight of my year. But I also have two terms of service on the Lake Oswego City Council, where we've had the pleasure of working with the county on a variety of measures. And I'm a candidate for treasurer and nothing else. I have no desire to be governor. I have no desire to be Secretary of State. I am not qualified to be Attorney General, so you wouldn't definitely want me in there. I would like to be the treasurer of Oregon with obligations to no one but the people of Oregon for eight years, and then I'm done. I haven't used all my time, I'm not going to, so I thank you for this opportunity and encourage not all of you to vote, I hope for me, but certainly, definitely, vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff.
All right, and now it's time for the Consent Agenda. I'll ask the Clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title.
I just have, oh. I'm sorry, I don't think I'm going to be able to show it. I just crashed.
Oh, my goodness. What are we going to do without seeing it? Why don't you just go ahead and read it, Mary?
I will. Okay, the Consent Agenda, under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a professional service agreement with Oregon Health Science University for consulting services for children covered by the Oregon Health Plan. Approval of a letter of agreement with the Healthy Columbia Willamette Participants for the continuing assessment and reporting of health care needs in our four-county community. Approval of an amendment to a subrecipient agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for advocacy in rural Clackamas County. Approval of Amendment Number Two to a professional service agreement with Robert Half, Inc., for temporary administrative staff. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lake Oswego regarding a transfer of a portion of Carmen Drive. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Metro to implement the Fiscal Year's 2016-2018 Year 27-28 Annual Waste Reduction and Recycle at Work Program. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Also, a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Colton School District for a school resource officer for the 2016-17 school year. A request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with North Clackamas School District for a school resource officer for the 2016-17 school year. Request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an annual operating plan and financial plan with the Oregon State Marine Board for the Clackamas County Boating Safety Action Plan. And a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Human Services for funding to contract specialist interview training. Also, and under business and community- I have no desire to be governor. I have no desire to be Secretary of State. I am not qualified to be Attorney General, so you wouldn't definitely want me in there. I would like to be the treasurer of Oregon with obligations to no one but the people of Oregon for eight years, and then I'm done. I haven't used all my time, I'm not going to, so I thank you for this opportunity and encourage not all of you to vote, I hope for me, but certainly, definitely vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff.
All right, and now it's time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
I'm sorry, I don't think I'm going to be able to show it. I just crashed.
Oh, my goodness. What are we going to do without seeing it? Why don't you just go ahead and read it, Mary?
I will. Okay, the consent agenda, under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a professional service agreement with Oregon Health Science University for consulting services for children covered by the Oregon Health Plan. Approval of a letter of agreement with the Healthy Columbia Willamette Participants for the continuing assessment and reporting of health care needs in our four-county community. Approval of an amendment to a sub-recipient agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for advocacy in rural Clackamas County. Approval of Amendment Number Two to a professional service agreement with Robert Half, Inc., for temporary administrative staff. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lake Oswego regarding a transfer of a portion of Carmen Drive. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Metro to implement the fiscal year's 2016-2018, year 27-28, annual waste reduction and recycle-at-work program. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Also, a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Colton School District for a school resource officer for the 2016-17 school year. A request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with North Clackamas School District for a school resource officer for the 2016-17 school year. Request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an annual operating plan and financial plan with the Oregon State Marine Board for the Clackamas County Boating Safety Action Plan. And a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Human Services for funding to contract specialist interview training. Also, and under Business and Community Services, approval of a memorandum of understanding between Clackamas County Parks and the Madrone Wall Preservation Committee for the donation to the Madrone Wall Park Capital Construction Project. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
All right, commissioners, do you want to remove any of those or talk about any of them? Entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Schrader with the second. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 4-0. And now it's time for the happy news from our county administrator, Mr. Crump.
Well, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We seem to be on track for another record evening.
Could be. Depends on how much you talk.
It certainly does. So I'll be, I just have one quick update for you today, though. The county was notified just this week that our transportation video series has won an honorable mention at an international competition. You may remember the three-video "Drive to Zero" series that we produced last year that really aimed to raise awareness about the importance of safe driving. The videos featured shoppers recklessly driving their shopping carts in dangerous ways inside supermarkets. And each video ended with our Transportation Safety Program Manager, Mr. Joe Merrick, saying, "You wouldn't do this in a grocery store. Why are you doing it on the road?" The series was a collaboration of our staff in transportation and development, as well as public and governmental affairs. And it was recognized at the International Safety Media Awards held at the 12th World Conference on Injury Prevention and Safety Promotion in Tampir, Finland. So way to go, DTD and PGA. And again, we should also thank the grocery outlet store in Oregon City for allowing us to film there.
All right, thank you. Time for commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Bernard.
I had breakfast with Ron Wyden the other day, and another hundred people. Talked about transportation and federal folks talking about whether or not they'll be able to pass the transportation bill. Of course, everything's delayed until after the election. I went to Greater Portland, Inc., which we are a member of the board, and there are a number of businesses, again, waiting for the election, see what happens with Measure 97. We also attended today, this afternoon, a Clackamas Service Center luncheon, Harvest for Hope, which was, Clackamas Service Center provides services, many services, to homeless or those that need help with groceries. Then today was the Great Shakeout. There wasn't much going on here. We just left the building. Of course, it started pouring shortly after. And I want to remind people that Joe Crum's memorial service is this Sunday at Rex Putnam. And I hope to see you there. One interesting thing, which I've never seen before, campaigns, is people putting signs in your yard. Every night, I have to take four signs out of my yard. Somebody drives by and just puts them up and leaves everybody else's, but it's kind of weird. I've never seen that before. I know in Milwaukee, people used to pick your sign up and put it in the neighbors so they'd yell at you. But it's kind of weird that I've, I think I've pulled so far about 10 signs out of my yard that people had put in there. But I think you should ask people if you can put them in their yard. Of course, in the right of way, in Clackamas County doesn't enforce, other communities do. Wilsonville, for example, definitely does, Milwaukee does. But anyway, have a great weekend. Oh, the dog. I don't know what I'd do without you, Mary. This is Murphy, and he's ready to go home with you. He is a lapsa-opsa mix. At nine years old, he's seeking a home for his retirement years, where he'll get the TLC he deserves. He seems to get along with older children and adults, as well as other dogs. Loud noises scare him, so a calm household would suit him well. He likes to play with stuffed toys, then takes a rest on a soft bed or a warm lap. Stop by to visit Murphy, and you'll fall in love. For more information about Murphy and our adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or visit them on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs. And as I mentioned before the meeting, it's interesting that we get a lot of older dogs. And I wonder why. I think that'd be a good question to ask, whether they're finding them, or people are dropping them off, whether it's people who can't afford to feed them, or they're homeless, or they just can't handle dogs anymore. It's something to be interested in finding out. So thank you.
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, great, it's been a busy week. I spent this morning at the Clackamas Workforce Partnership, and that is our workforce board here in the county. And it was a very, very interesting meeting. I had a chance, under their section commissioner of communication, to talk about our affordable housing initiatives, in particular, the fact that we are building 215 units. I believe it's 215, or is it 212?
214.
214, well, right smack in the middle. There you go. In fact, we did approve that on the consent agenda tonight. And what I explained was that this was a good call, I think, on the part of our commission. It is really trying to keep rents down. It is subsidized housing, anywhere from $700 to $900 a month. As you know, one of the crises that we are dealing with in this county is people getting priced out of their apartments. And I have two new millennials at my home to be a testament to that fact one more time. I've got my son and, actually, my two sons, who leases were up and the apartments rents went up so high that, at this point, they couldn't, they couldn't afford it. So this is actually not just a countywide problem, it seems to be a statewide problem. Because one of the other things I did was, this past Monday, I drove out to Condon, Oregon, which really was a beautiful drive getting out there, past beautiful windmill farms, which is their kind of economic development piece, to the small community of Condon, Oregon, for the Association of Oregon Counties District Three meeting, and those are the counties of Hood River, Morro, Sherman, Wasco, and Wheeler, where we also had a conversation about housing statewide, and started to compile legislative fixes or things that we would like to see move forward at the state level as an association. Commissioner Savis has also been working very hard on this issue, and I expect he's going to talk about, I think, the housing meeting that was last night, Oak Grove. He was able to attend that, which I'm really grateful for. One of the other things that we had this morning was the Jobseeker Advisory Group meeting. I'm the co-chair of that with, I can't remember the fellow's name, but he's from PGE, Public, Portland General Electric. And essentially, what we're doing there is we're looking at what the metrics will be for workforce, about how we succeed in connecting job seekers to jobs. So we're not the end, working with the business community, seeing what their needs are. We are actually assessing how we make the connections for people who are seeking jobs, and who are the providers out there. One of the things we decided to do is what I call an authority nap, and that is to really do an in-depth study of who's on first out there in the workforce community, whether it's faith-based, whether it's state-based, whether it's county-based, whether it's under the umbrella of state human services employment, state employment office, whether it's under the umbrella of our human services division, but what is out there that connects people to jobs? And then we can really start making sure that we are collaborating with everybody across the board. And hopefully, we'll eventually convene a larger countywide conversation with all of those folks about what are the strategies that we need to develop to make sure that people, again, have access to the services they need to seek a job. The other piece is, I was on the Community and Economic Development National Conference Call, the National Association of Counties, and again, we focused on workforce. We had a speaker, Tim Sullivan, who talked about Wisconsin being a manufacturing-based state, and what their, what their work has been to connect folks to jobs. And one of the things that he basically stated, there was a, there is a disconnect there between, you know, the trades in manufacturing and, you know, the business CEOs and the educational institutions, that there's been a shift from, basically, kids going into vocational education and trades to a four-year college degree. And they are trying to, obviously, still encourage people to go on to a four-year college degree, but they are upping their efforts, as we are here, to make sure that young adults and youth that want to go into a trade of some kind, construction, plumbing, you know, steel workers, metal workers, so on and so forth, that they have opportunities to actually enter the workforce there. We also, in Clackamas, have a very strong manufacturing cluster. And we are told consistently by our business community that they need folks who have the technological abilities. A lot of this is computer-based right now, and you're using laser technologies and more advanced skill sets. So we're trying to work with our business community to see what training needs they have. So it was interesting to hear from a different part of the country. And we also talked about Washington, D.C. update, and obviously, what was said was there's not much going on there, and not much will happen until after the presidential election. So that was, that's the national news for the National Association of Counties. Finally, I'm going to be doing class number four tomorrow on my Certified Global Business Professional class. It's four out of five, and I'm learning everything there is to know about how to get ready to bring your business international and global, and how to do outreach to other countries, and what the services are we have here in the state at the national level and at the local level to help a business do just that. Okay, lastly, I'm going to read the arts and culture activities in the county. Lakewood Theater Company, Tenderloin, The Lost Treasures Collection presents Tenderloin, the musical. Presented script in hand with minimal staging in a concert cabaret-style setting. Reverend Brock, a single-minded 1890 social reformer, works to sanitize a red-light neighborhood in western Manhattan known as the Tenderloin. This is a lost treasure. The folks that wrote and did the lyrics for this play and the book was Jerry Bach and Joseph Stein, who actually later produced Fiddler on the Roof. So this is one of their early works together. Friday, October 21st, 7:00 p.m., and Saturday, October 22nd, 2:00 and 7:00 p.m., at Lakewood's side door stage in Lake Oswego. Westland Radio Show. The Westland Historical Society presents the first-ever live theatrical radio show. Join us in the Westland of 1956. Segments include roundup of the news, a brief soap opera, community calendar, and Westland history on parade. Saturday, October 22nd, 7:00 p.m., at the Westland Library. For other information on arts events, go to clackamasartsalliance.org. Okay?
Commissioner Savis.
Yes, well, it seems like the topic recently has been homeless and houselessness. And last evening, we had a town hall in the Oak Grove area. Chair Ludlow had joined in on this group. It's the third town hall we've had there. And we had a little over 100 people that were at this event last night, trying to deal and cope with the problems of that. And so we find ourselves dealing with the symptoms right now, and I never thought that we would be at this point. And I remember when I came here six years ago, we were actually looking at preventing situations like this. So here we are, dealing with the symptoms. And the problem is really, and we heard today from the luncheon that it went to, from some of our professionals, that the number-one reason these people are homeless, houseless, is because of lack of employment, jobs. And frankly, it's really about family wage jobs, because there are some people that are homeless that actually have a job, and that was even pointed out today at the luncheon as well, that we have people that have jobs but don't, don't have good-paying jobs. When I came here six years ago, I listened intently, and the state of Oregon, the governor's office, their economic development team realizes that employment is a huge issue. And the last presentation we had at our business alliance from the governor's office with regard to this was that Clackamas, acknowledging that Clackamas County has a shortage of employment lands, and, which is, again, the six years of work, and the recommendation from our Economic Development Commission is to work on those employment lands. And I'm hoping we can make some gains there, because that really is, that really is the cause. And now we're dealing with it, more so ever, more than ever, we're dealing with the symptoms of not having an employment land and not having those employment possibilities. We're dealing with huge homelessness and houselessness. The stat I heard from one of the staff members today from the Clackamas Service Center, and she had shared this with me before, was that for every $100 increase in rent, the homeless count goes up approximately 15%. That's kind of huge. This morning, at a function this morning, I talked to a lady who lives in a small studio apartment in northwest Portland, and the rents in those buildings are $2,300 a month, $2,300 a month for those rents up in there. And it's, it's pretty striking. Of course, there's other areas where it's less, but, you know, we've got, this is, creates a problem. And another person that was, that was at the same table had just experienced a $400-a-month increase in the rent just recently. So that's the kind of thing, see, 400, so if it goes up 100, and you have 15% increase, just multiply that times four, and it's no wonder we're in this mess. But it takes a lot of resources to deal with the symptoms, and I think it's a good move, like, just like maintenance, to try to deal with, trying to increase the employment opportunities and make Oregon and Clackamas County a good place to do business. A number of business owners I've also talked to lately are talking about the impacts, the concerns and impacts around 97, should it pass. And a lot of them are actually holding off on purchases. They're holding off on hiring because, why we have heard from the state that the estimated impacts are $600 per household, or $600 per person per household. No one's done the analysis of what the impacts may be to business, and they're expecting a big hit on this as well. And should that happen, I can tell you that some businesses said, we're already at the fine line right now, we're surviving, and with the increase of the minimum wage part, as it tiers up, coupled with the extra taxes that go with that, that are not, social security and other taxes that go along with payroll, that some of them are thinking that next year will be really perhaps the end of their small business, perhaps. So I hope that's not as serious as it sounds. But when you start hearing right now that purchases and hires are being held off until after this measure, that kind of speaks to the gravity of Measure 97 and the situation we have here in Oregon.
Thank you. We mentioned this on Tuesday, but most of us attended the grand opening of two libraries this last week on Saturday. One was at Canby, where they combined the city hall and the library together via public vote. And the beautiful one here in Oregon City, Carnegie Library, that was remodeled to look just about like the original one was. Great job on that. Some beautiful artwork in there, and that also was by a vote of the people. I attended also three events this last week that gave me a time to pause and really think about what, how these organizations exist. One is Clackamas Women's Services. Those people, it's one thing that they raise a lot of money, and they're having a gala affair this Saturday, too, but they do raise money, but they also volunteer so much. There's so many great volunteers that keep that organization alive. Also, NAMI, I had an opportunity to speak with them, and what fantastic volunteers they have that are dedicated to intervening to get more mental health care for those in need. And I might say that, in my opinion, when the state of Oregon decided to mainstream mental health patients some 20 years ago, it's been an abysmal failure. We've had to deal with these people with our social services and our jails, and, you know, that has to be changed, and the state has to step up, because it feels like an unfunded mandate in a lot of ways. And the Clackamas Service Center today, and this is their first luncheon, and it was sold out. And what a great cause to feed people. This, this really is giving people a hand up and not a hand out. Sure, they feed them, sure they give them clothing, but they're working with them to try to better them and get them out of homelessness or houselessness. But it was great to see them raise rather quickly. I might add, well over $20,000 through a paddle race, so. So fantastic event that was. The Leadership Academy. I had the pleasure of handing out their certificates this week for the Leadership Academy. That's where employees go through quite a rigorous class and study, but they have mentors that come alongside them and help them out. But these people were really genuinely excited to get those certificates. So it was a pleasure to do that this week. And finally, my saying for the day, a strong person is not a person who doesn't cry. A strong person is a person who cries, pauses, and gets up and fights again. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope you have a great week, even though it's gonna rain on you pretty bad. We appreciate your attention today. It's a short, mini 51 minutes, not our world record, but pretty close. So there being no further business before the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.